Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, November 14, 2016, to order. It's about 10 past 7:00. I do apologize that we are running a few minutes late. At this time, all members of this board are present, and I would kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I could kindly ask Selectman Shampoo to please lead us in this effort.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Our first item on the agenda is the Transmitting of the Treasury Warrants 1818A, 1919A, 20 and 20A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I noticed on the Treasury warrant, the Payroll Warrant 20A, I noticed that there was a line item for superintendent, and it had an item of about $6,600 in that line item. Just wondering what the explanation of that is.
That is the amount for the arrangement, apparently, that was made with the, between the school committee and the former superintendent for compensation.
And how long is that arrangement for? Do we know?
It's, my understanding, it continues for the duration of the academic year.
Until June of '17?
Yes.
Yeah. And this is for the old, this is for the former superintendent who resigned?
That's right.
And are we anticipating that the school committee will come back to you or the board here in regards to, now that they've put on an interim superintendent, will that affect the budget in any way? Are we anticipating that if this payment is going to the former superintendent for her resignation, and now we have an interim superintendent, is the town going to be incurring additional cost or expenditure to that department?
I would anticipate there will be additional costs. I don't know what arrangement has been made with the interim superintendent. I've indicated, from my perspective, that the school department will have to deal with whatever implications come out of this within their existing budget.
Madam Chair, I could say, Selectman Kyra brings out a great point. This, what, $6,100? Is this a one-time deal? Is this, how often is this payment going to be made? Obviously, it's not a deal that we did. The school committee did the deal, but I'm curious.
The amount that appears on the warrant is paid every other week, so it would continue through the balance of this school year.
So in essence, she's going to get about $3,000 a week until the end of June? I'm just doing some quick, maybe fuzzy math here, but...
Well, worthy chair, just to add into that, that's on the regular payroll warrant, so that would include coverage of health. Also, I'm assuming it would include retirement benefits that go into her. She maintains that status of service, so the town would be liable for the retirement when she goes as well through the end of the year and when she eventually retires. If she's on the regular payroll warrant, is that correct? She's on the regular payroll warrant?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had it seconded, we had discussion. At this time, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
I'm in favor of 1818A, 1919A, 20.
Okay, so let me step back here. So you're in favor of those. The rest of the board is in favor? And then regarding which one are you opposed to, Mr. Kyra?
20A.
20A, okay.
Madam Chair, I'm in agreement with Selectman Kyra. I think he brings up a valid point, and I do support that with him.
If I could, Madam Chair, let me just make sure the board understands that, first of all, as many of, I think everyone knows, the terms of this separation agreement were, by agreement of the parties, confidential nondisclosure, with the exception, according to the statute, monetary amounts are subject to public record or public review. So that's why, in terms of bringing this up, you know, the amounts that were paid, that is subject to public disclosure, the fact that the school committee entered into this agreement is a binding agreement between the school committee and the former superintendent. So I can appreciate, perhaps, the concern about the settlement and the terms of the settlement, but at the end of the day, if a majority of the board decides not to vote in favor of this payment, I think there could be some legal recourse on the part of the former superintendent. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that implication.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the increase that could happen to the budget, too, that's unknown at this point in time as well, just...
Okay. So the vote's been taken, and Bev, if you need any clarity on that in terms of the votes, please let us know. All set? Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for July 18, 2016, and October 24, 2016. I'd like to take them up separately. Would anyone like to make a motion for the approval of the July 18, 2016 minutes?
So moved.
Motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
I think I should abstain. I mean, I have no issue approving it. I don't think I was not at that meeting.
Okay, so we'll do four approving and one abstention. Okay?
It looks fine, though. Yep.
So moving on to the October 24, 2016, before I ask for questions, comments, or a motion, I'd like to offer one revision to that, if I may, which is regarding the Wilmington farmers market, very specifically my comments that are listed. It's on page one, which is the second to the last paragraph. It indicates the midst of a feasibility study. I'd like to kindly ask if we could change feasibility study to facilities master plan. If anyone has any objection to that, please let me know, but I'd like to offer that as an amendment. So I'd like to see if we can have questions, comments, or a motion regarding these minutes with that suggested change.
I would move to approve the minutes as written with the addition, or with the change made that you suggest.
Okay, motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our first appointment, which we are running a few minutes behind. I do apologize. It is with Louis Semaglia, Director of Veterans Services, regarding the request to proclaim Wilmington a Purple Heart community and recognition of Meredith Cipriani. So I'd like to start out with some introductory comments, and then I'm going to offer Lou an opportunity to speak. I do see that we have Senator Bruce Tar here as well, and a full audience here, and...
Francisco Urana is the Secretary of Veterans Services for DBS for the state.
Very important gentleman here as well.
Yeah.
Yes. Very thrilled to have you here. Thank you. I can't see you. Alls I can see is reserved for combat, so, which is right in front of you, so...
That's okay, because he does have one of those medals as well.
Okay, so I apologize. You are, like, right in my line of sight, so I apologize for that, so... So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it's a great honor to be here this evening to recognize some very special people who are very important to the Wilmington community and who have, through their military service, played a selfless and very important role in defense of our nation, our Purple Heart recipients. And it is my understanding that we have more than a dozen individuals who, through their acts of courage, have earned a Purple Heart. These are the people who believe in others above self and have exhibited tremendous bravery and resilience in times that were more trying than any of us could ever imagine. The Purple Heart was originally known as the Badge of Military Merit and was first established by George Washington during his time as Commander in Chief of the Continental Army. George Washington only personally awarded the Badge of Military Merit to three soldiers during the Revolutionary War. The badge was never officially abolished but was not presented again until after World War I. The Purple Heart was revived on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth by executive order of the President of the United States. This action was taken in recognition of his achievements and out of respect to his memory. The first recipient of the newly designated Purple Heart was Douglas MacArthur. The medal was initially awarded to acknowledge those wounded in actions against the enemy. The criteria for award of the Purple Heart has more recently been modified by executive order to include soldiers wounded during terrorist attacks while serving as peacemakers and wounded through friendly fire. Needless to say, Purple Heart recipients are held in high regard and demand our gratitude and our utmost respect. As is the case so often with those who have stepped into harm's way in defense of our country, they are the last to seek recognition and praise for their actions. This evening, I would first like to extend the board's sincere thanks to one very special lady who was here this evening, who took the initiative to bring this idea forward to the town of Wilmington and is the primary reason behind this special event that you see here tonight. I'd like to introduce to everyone Meredith Cipriani, who approached the town of Wilmington with the idea of locating designated parking spaces specifically for the Purple Heart recipients in high-profile public places around the town of Wilmington. Meredith graciously offered to purchase the Purple Heart signs and assist in this effort. We have gratefully accepted her offer and have installed the three Purple Heart parking signs she donated at Town Hall, Silver Lake, and beside the Veterans Office where Lou works with Joe Downs. To acknowledge her act of kindness and respect, the board wishes to acknowledge her and offer the certificate of appreciation. And before I ask her to come up, I'd like to offer my colleagues an opportunity to offer some comments to Meredith. Meredith's here to my right in the back here with her family. Welcome, Meredith. So I'll stop to my left to offer, Mr. Shampoo, Selectman Shampoo, to offer any comments.
I'll be very brief. Meredith, I don't know what to say except thank you. You'll hear it a number of times this evening, I hope. We're very grateful to you. Wilmington makes no bones about being patriotic. Under Lou's guidance, this town goes above and beyond the call of duty, in my opinion, to exhibit our patriotism and support our veterans, present and past. And in this fashion that you introduced to us, we're able to take that to another level. And so we will be and are very grateful to you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you so much. I love the color purple in our town.
Yeah, just to be quick, Lou, as the Veterans Agent, he does a great job, and I'm not just saying he's perhaps one of the best VA agents here in the Commonwealth, but it's really nice that a citizen actually thought of this, and that speaks volumes. And you're a young lady, and for you to think of this, I think that's an outstanding gift that you are offering to the community, and it was a citizen that thought that. We have all our respect for our veterans, but that says something when a citizen steps up to the plate and comes up with something like that. That speaks volumes. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you for your generosity. The apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Is that what they say with your mom and dad over there? Just a wonderful gesture for what you've done for the town. Lou, it was a wonderful ceremony Friday. You had to be congratulated for that. And to our veterans, thank you all very much for what you do and what you've done for our community and in our nation.
I get to go last, but I think it bears repeating. Thank you very much. I appreciate your generosity and appreciate you and your family being here, and this is just a terrific idea, a great way to honor some of our finest residents, the heroes of our town. And so thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. And Lou, thanks for making it happen. Once again, you've stepped up, and you and Joe do a fantastic job, like Mr. Kyra said. It was absolute first-class ceremony, like, once again, on Veterans Day, as it always does. It was great to see so many residents come out and support our veterans, which is no surprise. Wilmington always does, and I think it speaks volumes. Meredith, just how appreciated this is by our town to have our Senator Tar here and the Secretary this evening. I think this, and to be here in this room with these folks is, just really shows how much the town really appreciates it. I know I do, and I know the residents really will appreciate this as well. So thank you.
And Jeff?
I think most of it's been said. I would just echo the comments that certainly, you know, Meredith, once a Wilmington native, always a Wilmington native, I think it just is so true how she never forgets her roots and is always thinking about how to offer something back to the town. So I really appreciate you coming up with this idea and really setting this in motion, and just thank you.
So at this time, I'm going to read the certificate that I'm going to present to Meredith, and then I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we are going to take a vote as a board, and then I'm going to turn the floor over to our Louis Semaglia, our Veterans Agent, and he's going to introduce our dignitaries again and certainly give us some remarks. So just want to make sure everybody knows that you will get to hear from Lou, so. So I would like to present the Town of Wilmington Certificate of Recognition to Ms. Meredith Cipriani for her generous contribution of reserved parking signs to benefit the Purple Heart recipients at Wilmington's Silver Lake Town Hall and Veterans Services Office, as well as a Veterans Parking Space at the Yentown Farm Recreation Facility. I am presenting this to Meredith on the 14th day of November 2016. Signed, Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. Meredith?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do in part to Meredith's desire to spotlight the sacrifices of our Purple Heart veterans, the board would also like to issue a proclamation designating Wilmington as a Purple Heart community. At this time, I will officially read the proclamation, and I will kindly ask my board members to offer a motion. The proclamation for the Town of Wilmington for a Purple Heart community, whereas the people of the Town of Wilmington have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country in this community and the armed forces for the good of all, and whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the Town of Wilmington who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded in action while engaged in combat, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in the present use and was created as the Badge of Military Merit on August 7, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. Initially, it was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word "merit" sewn upon it, and whereas August 7 is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim Wilmington, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart community honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform that were wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Be it further proclaimed that the Town of Wilmington will recognize August 7 annually as Purple Heart Day and urge the people and organizations of Wilmington to display the Purple Heart flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the official seal of the Town of Wilmington, Massachusetts, to be affixed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is made. Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Before I turn the program over to Lou, I'd just like to acknowledge that we are all wearing an article of clothing that is purple tonight to celebrate this proclamation and that Wilmington is now officially a Purple Heart community. Certainly, in addition to Meredith's efforts, I'd like to recognize our Veterans Agent, Louis Semaglia, who's also a former Selectman, and I'd like to allow you, Lou, to take the floor, and if you could kindly re-recognize our dignitaries, and I still can't see that very handsome gentleman in the back, so I want to make sure that he gets certainly recognized to the fullest extent. I apologize once again. Lou?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and just like to start off by, again, thanking everybody that came out Friday. It was a huge crowd in the comments, as it always is. I'm so, always so proud to say I'm from Wilmington and how we revere our veterans and now our Purple Heart veterans. As Chairman O'Connell mentioned, the gentleman down the back is Francisco Urana. Francisco started volunteering in the Veterans Office in Lawrence in 2006, and I believe a year later, when he was hired on full-time there, I was President of the State Association of Veteran Service Officers. And I got a call from, might have been Senator Tar's office, they were looking for somebody to go on the Hidden Wounds Commission. He got moon on my mind with the big moon out there. The Hidden Wounds Commission, and I called Francisco and I asked him if he would kindly be on that committee, even though he had just started, and I couldn't have thought of a better way for him to come on. He is also a Purple Heart recipient, and if you wouldn't mind, Madam Chair, could I invite him to say a few words?
Absolutely.
Francisco Urana.
You want to sit?
Sure. Excellent. I was waiting for permission.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen, Senator Tar, members and residents of this great city and this great town, thank you so very much for this opportunity. And to Ms. Cipriani, thank you so very much for the phenomenal gesture. I tell you, this is a small gesture, the aspect of this opportunity to recognize Wilmington as a Purple Heart town, but from an outsider, and any veteran who now drives and passes through these great towns and streets, will know that Wilmington is veteran-friendly, will know the sense of respect and admiration that Wilmington and its residents and this board of governance has for the sense of appreciation for those who have sacrificed, those who have been injured in combat in defense of our country, in defense of our Constitution. And it gives me no great pleasure to tell you that Louis Semaglia is one of the best Veteran Service Officers this state has. He, I consider him a mentor, a friend, and somebody that always goes above and beyond to do more with less, to really go above and beyond and not keep the status quo and create opportunities such as this, to be able to continue to advocate for all of our veterans. And today, I'm so very proud, as a Purple Heart recipient and as your Secretary of Department of Veteran Services, to be in the presence of something that every town, every city across this great state should take as an example of what can be done with phenomenal appreciation for our veterans. So thank you so very much to all of you for unanimously passing this today, but more importantly, thank you for your respect and your dedication to all of our veterans and their families in Wilmington and across this great Commonwealth in our nation. Thank you so very much.
Yes. Yeah. Your show.
No, no. Senator Tar, if you would like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Lou, and thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the board, and thank you for this tremendous vote and very significant vote that you have just taken. I also want to say a particular word of thanks to our Secretary of Veterans Affairs. It is always an honor and a pleasure to be here in his company because of all the work that he does every day to advance the state of the art in trying to respond to the needs of our veterans and try to be particularly responsive to issues that continue to be very troubling, that we need to be responsive to. Every day, he is on the front lines, and he serves with dignity, and he serves with honor, and he serves with tremendous effectiveness, and I think we are so honored to be in his company tonight, and I want to thank him for coming to Wilmington. And I also want to thank Lou for his work. I think all of you know the relationship that Lou and I have, and I cherish that very much, because Lou is on the front lines every day, making sure that the promises made to our people that serve in the military are kept. And I appreciate the fact that when he encounters a problem, when he sees a systemic issue, when he sees something that can be changed, he's on the phone with us at the State House, and we do our very best to be responsive and make that situation better than it was before Lou got involved in it. So I appreciate very much the work that he does. I also want to offer, on a night when there's so much gratitude to be expressed, I want to offer appreciation to Meredith for reminding us all the power of a citizen to change things, to show leadership, to make a difference in expressing appreciation to our veterans community. And isn't it significant that when Meredith raised that suggestion, it resonated so quickly and so deeply in this community with your actions to embrace her suggestion, with your vote tonight, and importantly, every day, recognizing the veterans of this Commonwealth and of this country? It was an amazing display of patriotism last Friday, and I was honored to be a part of it. And it was one of so many such expressions that have been made in this community over the years, and that's why it's an honor to represent you in the Senate. You know, it seems at times that we always look for tangible ways to express our appreciation, and tonight, you've seized upon an opportunity to provide a very real and a very important one, so that veterans, when they come to this community, if they are in this community and they are recipients of the Purple Heart, if they have suffered an injury, or if there has been a lost life that is recognized by this plaque, that they do know, in fact, that Wilmington has a special place in its heart and has a special place wherever these signs are erected for those who have made those sacrifices on behalf of this great nation. So I want to commend the board and the town administrator and really thank you for the vote that you've taken tonight. It is something that we all should take due note of, and I hope it sets an example for communities all across the Commonwealth, and I suspect that it will. And importantly, it happened because one citizen said, "What can we do for our veterans? What a stronger country we would have if everyone spent a few minutes thinking about that," and I hope they will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's all been said. I've talked to Meredith, and I've been emailing her, and I'm just honored to be a part of this. This was, I'd like to say it was my idea, but it really wasn't. It was your idea. The fact that Secretary Urana kind of stole my thunder when I said, "It's not just Wilmington residents. You're going to have people, veterans, that come into this town from any of our borders, they come to Town Hall, they go to Silver Lake, or they come to my office, and they're going to see these Purple Heart signs, and they're going to just know, and hopefully they'll hear today, about tonight's meeting in the local media or social media, and they'll understand that Wilmington does care about their veterans." And it really is easy to be the Veteran Service Officer in Wilmington, and I say that with all due respect to the position and the hard work that we put in over there, but this community sincerely loves its veterans, and that shows on Veterans Day, Memorial Day, the crowds that we have, and it's very humbling. And I would also like to thank Bev for helping out with the decorations of the auditorium tonight. I think it looks wonderful, and I would like to read, it's called the POW MIA Missing Man Table, and I'm honored to have, again, Jeff inviting us to put this in here tonight. And a prisoner of war or a missing, I'm sorry, missing in action, killed in action, they are awarded the Purple Heart posthumously. So anytime there's an event, I don't know if anyone has seen this table before, but there's, the different items on the table mean something. And as you enter the room, you may have noticed a special table. It is reserved to honor our missing. And thank you, Judy, for allowing me to, sorry, Madam Chair, to explain the meaning of this table. The table before you is a place of honor. It is set for one. The table is our way of symbolizing the fact that members of our profession of arms are missing from our midst. They are commonly called POWs or MIA's. We call them brothers. They are unable to be with us this evening. They are unable to be with us this evening, and so we remember them. The table is set for one and is small, symbolizing the frailty of one prisoner alone against his oppressors. The tablecloth is white, symbolizing the purity of their intentions to respond to their country's call to arms. The single red rose displayed in a vase reminds us of the families and loved ones of our comrades in arms who keep the faith awaiting their return. The red ribbon tied so predominantly on the vase is reminiscent of the red ribbon worn upon the lapel and breast of thousands who bear witness to their unyielding determination to demand a proper accounting of our missing. The candle. The candle is lit. It reflects our hope for their return. A slice of lemon is on the bread plate to remind us of their bitter fate. There's salt upon the bread plate, symbolic of the family's tears as they wait. The glass is inverted. They cannot be with us tonight. The Bible represents faith in a higher power and the pledge to our country, founded as one nation under God. The black napkin stands for the emptiness these warriors have left in the hearts of their families and friends. The chair is empty. They are not here. Remember, all of you who served with them and called them comrades, who depended upon their might and aid, and relied upon them, for surely they have not forsaken you until they come home. Remember. And Ronald Eaton is one of our MIA's. He has been missing in action since Korea, and that's Bev Dalton's uncle. And his monument is on the end of Glen Road and Main Street. And we decorate it every year, as we do, and we pray for him to come home. So, again, Meredith, it means a lot to the veteran population. I can't even explain to you how much the comments I've received. And there's a little more than 12, I think, Purple Hearts. I've been, this has been a pretty good week, obviously, for veterans, but for phone calls and thanking the thoughtfulness of you doing that. And I said I wasn't going to point out any Purple Heart recipients, but as Secretary Uraina said, he received his in Iraq. And I'm not going to point out anybody else, Mr. Harbener, unless you want to say something. Vietnam. And, again, thank you to the Board, and I'd like to present this flag, this Purple Heart flag. To you, Judy.
I'd like to, once again, thank everyone for being here for this presentation. For anyone in the room that's a veteran, once again, thank you very much for your service, and most notably, our Purple Heart recipients. I'd like to, once again, recognize Meredith, once again, to say thank you. I want to just offer you the courtesy of saying anything that you might like to say, if you'd like to introduce your family. I don't mean to spot you, but you are the reason why this came to fruition for our town, and we are so grateful. In my opinion, in a world like today, we need more people like Meredith Cipriani in the world. So the floor is yours, if you'd like to offer any comments.
I'll make it quick, but I appreciate the recognition and everything, but I do believe that the recognition goes to our amazing and strong men and women, brave, who have gone out there and give us the freedom that we have today. So my thanks is to you. And thank you for anonymous, excuse me, and thank you for accepting this into our community. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. So moving on to our next appointment, which is scheduled for 7:15, we are running behind with Stephen Bigley from UC Synergetics with reference to a public hearing on the request of Verizon New England, Inc., and Reddy Municipal Light Department to place one poll on Stroud Ave. Mr. Bigley? Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm here to represent Verizon's interest in a public petition to add an additional poll on Stroud Avenue to support an existing lengthy span. The wires are hanging low over driveways, and there's a potential danger.
Anything that you have to offer, Jeff, on this request?
No, the request was received, and we have no objection to the poll location.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the Board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Have the residents been notified of this?
Yes. Yeah, the...
Has there been any feedback from them?
Not, I've not received any feedback.
Anything from any other member of the Board?
Well, yeah, thank you, Greg, for asking that. There's no one from Stroud Ave here, is there?
Well, it is a public hearing. I'm going to go to the audience.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Judy, I wanted to just make sure. Okay, thank you for that.
Do you have any specific questions?
Nothing else, no.
Okay. So it is a public hearing at this time. I am going to open it up to the audience. Is anyone here to speak on this matter? My reserved Combat Wounded sign is inhibiting my ability to see, so I apologize. I'm thrilled to have it there, but I just make sure I don't miss anybody. So hearing no additional comments at this time, would we like to make a motion to accept this request?
Showman.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next appointment, which is with Michael Arbagonis, our Police Chief, with reference to our 2016 Santa Run. Kind of scary that we're talking about Christmas, I will say.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I would like to invite Officer Dan Furbush to go over the details of the Santa Run. Last year, this young gentleman and several firefighters had thought of the idea to go out around town and get an opportunity to have Santa meet with some of the children in the neighborhoods. And it was so popular, I guess, that Santa ran a little behind. And we know that he has a deadline to keep, and we have to keep that hard and fast. So the plan this year would be have stop locations at various parking lots throughout the town, mostly schools, and have the children be able to meet us there at a pre-scheduled time. So I'll let Dan talk more in detail about it.
Good evening, everyone. So last year was our first year, and like the chief said, we kind of underestimated how successful it was going to be. We expected maybe a handful of kids, maybe a couple hundred kids, and we ended up a neighborhood swamp with kids, all to come out and see Santa Claus. We got people from all over town, outside of town. We had people baking cookies and having notes and stuff like that. We did run a little behind, so this year, we did, we ended up doing some changes to try to make it to where we can see everyone. This year, what we're going to do is we have a group of volunteers again this year. Last year, we had A&amp;S towing, we had Forests towing. Amongst the Fire Department and Police Department volunteers that came out, as well as some family members came out. This year, same people coming back. We actually have requests from the DPW and other personnel around town that want to join in as well. This year, we're going to stop, like the chief said, five different locations. We're going to start off at the Shoshine Elementary School. We're going to move our way over to the Wildwood, then to Woven Street, the North Intermediate, and then finally, the Town Hall. We're going to spend approximately one hour at each location. It's above Santa Claus on board. It'll give opportunity for the kids to come out, take pictures with Santa Claus, take pictures with the town vehicles. We're going to do some activities like sing Christmas carols, hand out some candy. One of the new things we're going to try to do this year is we're going to, it's not going to be a requirement, but we are going to request that if anyone would like to donate a gift, a small toy, to the Fire Department's program, the Toys for Wilmington Children, that we will collect there, and we will provide it to the Fire Department so they can do their charity work that they do every year. This is a program that they've been doing for years and years. People usually come to the Fire Department and drop it off. This time, when we're out and about, like you said, we're going to make requests to see if people would like to donate, or if they want to donate, like a canned good to the food pantry. We'll talk to them, see if they want to gather anything. Main part is, is obviously, holidays are tough for a lot of people. It's a good opportunity that we can put some smiles on some kids' faces on that day, and then hopefully for Christmas, too, because, like I said, not everyone can afford the holidays that we all get to have. So this is going to be a great opportunity, hopefully, that the volunteers of the town can give back to the town a little bit and put some smiles on some people's faces.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions from any members of the Board?
This is a great program. Wonderful idea. Can you repeat again where the donations go to, or how they make donations? Is there...
So, the Fire Department has a program that they've been going on for many years. It's called Toys for Wilmington Children. Essentially, what it is, is the less fortunate children of Wilmington, their parents provide a list to firefighter Kennedy, who's in charge of it. And they try to gather as much toys, donations and stuff like that, and they try to provide, come Christmas, they hand them out to the family so that way they have something. So...
Do you accept monetary gifts as well?
No, it's just like toys or puzzles, games, that kind of stuff. So this year, A&amp;S is going to add, or has offered to add an additional truck to help carry some of the excess stuff. So everything will go right to Wilmington. And I know the Fire Department, I was talking with them earlier, anything that's left over goes to another charity, like Children's Hospital or something like that. So none of it, it all goes to people who really need it this year. So...
So I just want to say, I think this is a wonderful idea. I do have a tactical question, so I apologize if I'm trying to be like Santa's elf, but just wanted to ask, would you be recommending, if residents were going to attend, that they try and attend a specific school in their geographical area to try and help with parking in crowds?
That's correct. That's correct. So what we're going to do is, obviously, within the next week or two, we're going to put something out on, like, newspaper. We also have a lot of social media out there. That's how it got so big last year. We also set up a Facebook page. It's Wilmington MA Santa Parade. It's going to have all the information, so parents want to go look on it. It's going to have the times, the different locations. You know, we'll make recommendations to people in the area. We picked five spots, tried to spread it out around town, because we know traveling, especially with little kids, can be kind of tough, so we want to try and make it easier for everyone. Now everyone can have a good day.
Wonderful. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just echo my colleagues, it sounds like a really great, wonderful thing. And, once again, volunteerism at its best, and it's nice to see that our, you know, men in blue, late women in blue, and our men firefighters and women firefighters are really stepping on a plate and doing it. All I'm going to say is, what a ho, 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 good time. All right, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So, any further questions or comments? Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
Move to grant the request.
Motion's been made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add as well, the date is going to be December 10th.
December 10th.
It's very important to put it out there for everyone, December 10th.
So December 10th and the kickoff is at...
Our first stop's at 9:00 AM, ma'am.
9:00 AM.
At the Shoshine School, yep.
And it will run till?
Approximately 4:00.
9 to 4:00.
Our last stop is here at Town Hall at 3:00 o'clock, and we'll see what happens after that.
Okay.
Is there a deadline for the donations?
I know, we'll be picking them up there. So what we'll do is, if people want to, if they want to get a gift or anything, you can still drop them off at the fire station if they so choose to.
As of December 10th?
Correct. If they want to bring it to the locations, we're going to have some volunteers from a local dance company that they said, one of the firefighters said they maybe will help. We also have family members from A&amp;S and from the Police Department that are willing to come out and help collect, and we'll collect there, so...
Okay, great. So Saturday, December 10th, from 9:00 to 4:00, approximately. More information to follow.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, if anyone wants to offer to volunteer, if you need, do you need additional resources at this time, and do you feel that you have what you need in terms of capable people to come down?
Yeah, we have volunteers, we have planned them.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next appointment with Valerie Gingrich, who is our Planning and Conservation Director regarding the disposition of Butters Farm.
Good evening.
Sorry that we're running a little bit late.
That's okay. I'm here to report tonight on the progress we've made with Butters Farm preservation efforts. As you remember, in 2015, Town Meeting voted to sell Butters Farm in an effort to put the historic structure back into private hands for preservation and rehabilitation. This year, the town issued an invitation to bid, and that bid outlined the expectations that there would be a new preservation restriction. And, am I on? No? I'll just keep talking. You can hear me. So the invitation to bid outlined expectations as far as a new preservation restriction and a rehab plan for the structure. We received one bid for $100 from Mr. David Chagru of Wilmington. And tonight, there's a purchase and sale agreement for your consideration later on tonight. I know Dave's eager to start on the project, kind of get it buttoned up for the winter. And before that happens, before the closing, after the purchase and sale agreement is signed, a new preservation restriction would be signed by this Board. You would also, you'll also get to look at a stewardship agreement with Historic New England, who's going to monitor the preservation, and the deed to Mr. Chagru. So before all is said and done, we'll have some documents back to you before the closing. So I'm happy to take any questions.
So just from an overall perspective, I mean, this is something that you've been working on for a while, to try and secure the future of this building. Would that be fair to say?
Yeah, the town, well, not me personally, but the town has been working on the preservation and kind of rehabilitation of the structure for a very long time, yes. The town purchased it in 2006, and since then, I think it's been an effort to keep the structure, you know, in its best shape as possible. But the thought is that the house, it's a house, so its best use is as a house, and putting it back into private hands allows it to be used that way. And it's the greatest chance that it's going to have for long-term preservation and kind of living on. So the effort was to sell the structure and have private dollars go into its rehab, and then have a preservation restriction that guarantees the preservation long-term.
So there's no question, you know, the story of Wilmington includes quite a legacy with that building, and the Historical Commission, for years, has worked on preservation efforts and has worked at the local and state level and beyond to try and maintain this building and even enhance it. And the grant monies that they've received, they've put to use, but it just got to a point where there needed to be some definitive action for the future of the building. So it sounds like this plan will secure that for the building, for the town, and for Mr. Chagru and his family. Would that be fair to say?
I think so.
Okay. Anything that you'd want to offer, Jeff, at all?
I would just say that I think this is highly advantageous for the town to sell this property to Mr. Chagru. As you've stated, the town has had ownership of it for a considerable period of time. Most of the money that has been put into the house between the purchase and then money to provide some limited restoration has come through the state. The town has spent approximately $40,000 through its own sources to try to shore up some of the property. But as some of you may have seen from taking a look at the building, in its current state, it is in dire straits, I would say. And so it's, in my estimation, a disservice to the preservation of the property for us to continue to hold on to it. We really need to transfer it to someone who has the wherewithal, the resources, and the ability to restore it to a historic condition. And then with the preservation restrictions that are in place, and having Historic New England as the steward, so to speak, going forward to work with the homeowner and see that the building maintains its historic character, I think that's the best-case scenario for us.
Okay. Questions, comments, or I'm assuming you'll be looking for a motion for us to proceed with the...
with the actual signing?
Right.
Okay.
Do you want the questions now, or after the motion?
Yep.
I, I would, I would agree, it makes sense that we sell the, the property and the house, but I just have a question regards to the thirty-nine thousand dollars that the town's gonna be committing or spending for the preservation restriction agreement, instead of us spending that type of money, is it possible to have our own Historical Commission oversee the agreement, or monitor the preservation restriction agreement, and that way there, we save the thirty-nine thousand dollars? We have a Historical Commission that's pretty active and involved, and it would make sense that if they can do that, we're gonna save, save the towns paying thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I would say, I mean, this is a similar approach to the one that was taken. If you recall, there's a historic property on Wilburn Street, and I don't have the address offhand, but some years ago, maybe four, five years ago or more, that property, there was a desire to save it, there was historic, historical restrictions that were put on the property, and I believe in that case as well, Historic New England was brought in as the steward of the property, and so, in fact, there was just recently a request that came through, the property owners were looking to make some changes, and the staff at Historic New England took a look at the, the materials, what it is they were looking to do, and made a recommendation on that. I certainly, I, I think the members of the Historic Commission have the passion for that kinda preservation, but they're a part-time board, I'm not sure that they necessarily have either the time or the expertise to be able to assess when a property owner is looking to change out windows, or, you know, make other changes to the building, to be able to step in and perform that activity. So this thirty-nine thousand dollars is a one-time fee, this is not an annual fee, so we, we pay, pay this, and then it allows them to continue to serve in that stewardship role for the long-term.
Yeah, there, there's no limitation then?
No.
After five years, it stops, or ten, okay.
No.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion for the disposition of the Butters Farm at this time?
I'll move that we accept the recommendation of the town planning director to accept the, or to, yeah, to accept the purchase and sale agreement of the Butters Farm, house for the amount of one hundred dollars.
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Anything further? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to communications.
Madam Chair, the first item under communications is a memo from need of the board that outlines a comment document that was issued to the Surface Transportation Board, they had a response deadline of November 5th. Their, this document really in some measure summarizes prior comments that were made both on September 29th, and then later at the public hearing on October 25th with regard to the New England Trans Rail efforts to seek an exemption from the Surface Transportation Board. I won't go through all the details as to what's included here, but suffice it to say, the town continues to be strongly opposed to New England Trans Rail's efforts to develop this property, it's an active superfund site, there are still areas that have not been fully characterized by EPA, there's nearly two hundred thou-, two hundred contaminants that are known to be in the groundwater in this area. This, this area happens to be right at a, a divide, hydraulic divide in the groundwater area there, so it is very significant, the particular location. There are a, a number of issues, both environmental and traffic and otherwise, as to why this project should not go forward. This particular document is being sent specifically to the Surface Transportation Board, we have a separate comment deadline coming up on the 29th of November. That comment document is going to the Office of Environmental Analysis, which is under the umbrella, if you will, of the STB, it's their environmental division, but we wanted to make sure that the Surface Transportation Board itself understood our concerns about this particular project.
I just wanted to offer a quick comment on this, I was not able to attend that public hearing due to a work conflict, but I did watch the tape back, and I certainly wanna commend you, Jeff, as well as the other selectmen that are here, that were in attendance and spoke that evening, as well as our legislative delegation. It is, there is no question that this is just a very, very serious concern for the town. You had articulated the November 29th deadline. In terms of next steps, where do you think this is gonna go beyond the comment period? And obviously, I know that you're working diligently to make sure that Wilmington is involved in any processes, or public forums, or next steps, but it's just, quite frankly, unconscionable that they could even be considering doing something like this when we haven't even finished something that's been an ongoing issue, and I'm just frustrated, as I'm sure many people are, with, I understand someone may need to be allowed due process, but just wanted to have some assurances here, and for the public, that we're doing everything we can to stop this.
So thi- this comment period on the 29th, a number of department heads that are involved will work with town council's office to develop this latest comment document. We also have Geo Insight, who is our environmental consultant, they are preparing a separate standalone document that will be sent in as well. We're at the stage right now where the Office of Environmental Analysis has put forward this template draft environmental impact statement, so it's really the, the guidelines, if you will, for the issues that they should be considering when they look at the potential environmental impacts of this development. So, the, based upon the comments that we submit and others, they will then decide to what degree, if any, they modify the scope of this environmental impact statement, and then, once that's done, they'll issue a, an environmental, a final environmental impact statement, and they have a consultant that will then look at the various issues that are outlined in that environmental impact statement, and develop comments and, and response. So we'll still have another opportunity to comment on that document, and, you know, we will just keep, you know, keep our, our attention focused on this, and, and take whatever measures we can to pursue having the Surface Transportation Board deny this request, it's, the, long and short of it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I just make a comment if I may, please?
Yes.
Thank you. No, I just want, you know, I just would like to make a comment on this, I remember at the last selectmen's meeting, Mr. Shampoo did encourage folks to go, and I thought that was a good point, and I do agree, I was there, I did speak on it, town manager, I thought, did a very, very great job, and I just wanna make a comment, I've served on the board for a number of years, I was on the board when this poison happened, at least ten years prior to 2003, sitting on the board, and I went through this whole process, and I wanna let you folks know that perhaps one of our greatest natural resources that was our drinking wells, and we had to shut down five of those wells, from what I understand, and we ended up buying water from MWRA. We used to sell water to other communities back then, and I remember taking a vote in the, the DEP came before the Board of Selectmen, looking for us, because it was a superfund site, basically to pass the baton to the federal government, the EPA, and I know the EPA can step up to the plate, I think they can do a little better job, but, you know, it shows you, it's a superfund site, and it's very serious out there, and, and you talk about the chemicals, we don't even know what's really underneath there, I know we talked about MRSA, that's the same chemical that Erin Brockovich talked about back in that movie, back then when they made that, you know, and I served on the board for a number of years, and a toll and agreement, I gotta say, the best vote I ever made in the twenty-seven years was actually voting against something. I voted against that toll and agreement back in 2003, we had a former town council back then, it was a horrible deal. So we got three million dollars from Olin, what, to hook into the MWRA, you know, it's hindsight now, but it was a horrible deal, and I just think that, you know, we should've did a lot more back then, and we didn't, and, you know, so be it, we're here now, and like you said, I thought the manager did do a good job, we did have official speak at that meeting, and I think folks aren't gonna go away from this, and it's a really horrible, horrible thing, and we just really gotta stay on top of it, and I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Question? I didn't know if it would be appropriate, well, first of all, obviously, I agree with my colleagues, Mr. McCoy's comments, and I think it's clear, I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but I think that it would be my understanding that all of us are opposed to this, in fact, I haven't spoken to one resident who was in favor of this project, I don't know who would be, but is it, would it be possible, would it be appropriate for us to offer a letter for this comment on the 29th, or even further, to offer a letter looking for help from our, from our members of Congress, from this board, would that be appropriate? Something we can do, I mean, just, anything we can do to try to prevent this from happening?
I would say certainly a, a letter to our delegation, we have been in touch with our congressional delegation, and our delegation at the state level, and will continue to be, but I think a, a letter from the board would put an exclamation point on how, how important an issue this is to the town.
Yes, definitely. In previous meetings, when this has come up, there were certainly additional comments that are similar to yours, indicating that any opportunity that we can continue to be speaking to our legislative delegation to remind them and make sure that we're first to mind awareness for them to be a part of it, I, if we send one letter, or we send fifty, I'd say, send fifty, you know, whatever it takes to keep, keep the momentum. This is, this is a real issue, and it has a lot of people very concerned, and, you know, we're all concerned as residents, we all get the public drinking water, but, you know, there was some real passionate people that live right there, that are concerned about their homes, there was a, a mother talking about people that were affected by cancer, and that at least two of them have passed, and so it's, it's pretty eye-opening that, and, and it's concerning to me that anyone could even be considering this, considering all the information that we know, and, you know, I would, I'm, I'm surprised that some of these state agencies are not, you know, strongly advising against it, and really advocating for Wilmington to not have this occur here, I'm, I'm a little troubled by that as well.
Madam Chair, like you said, you're in the real estate business, a lot of folks out there, they're not, when they go to sell their homes, they're not gonna get full value, and it's sad, and those poor folks down at that Cook Ave, and once again, it was a horrible, horrible agreement back in 2003, voted against it, we should've got a lot more out of that, but we didn't, but now we need to move forward in the best way we can, and it's a, it's really sad, sad situation down there, really sad.
There's, I don't wanna, you know, get on too much of a tangent, but, you know, based on the profession that you, you talked about, there is one specific property address, which I won't say was on the market, and was on the market for multiple years because of that reason, and you have to be careful, as a realtor, you can't stigmatize a property, but news travels fast, and if people do their research, it's not, it's not difficult to figure that out, so, without, you know, overstepping, it, it absolutely does impact real estate values, it has very specifically for property addresses in that area, and it will continue, especially if this comes in, that's just my opinion, but professionally, it's been proven.
Exactly what you're saying, that's why that agreement in 2003, once again, it was horrible, if they had other contingencies in that, we don't know what other chemicals are under the ground, and look at those poor folks that live in that area, you know, like you said, you know, they're gonna lose full valuation, and sad, sad.
Madam Chair, just, just to make one point, I think it, and I, and I understand Selectman McCoy's position on the tolling agreement, I, I do think it needs to be pointed out that the intent there was, and the purpose of the tolling agreement is to essentially freeze the ability of the town to pursue damages at a later point, so, you know, and I, and I don't wanna go too far down the line here, because some of this involved executive session conversations, but I think it, suffice it to say, that, that the town is a consequence of the loss of five of our drinking water wells, needed to identify another source of public water, and really the most viable source turned out to be the MWRA, and so, as a means to pay for the construction of the pipeline, that was part of the arrangement there, but certainly, you know, people have differing opinions on it, but I think there was some justification in trying to obtain an amount of money from Olin to cover the cost of allowing us to connect to the MWRA.
I understand, Jeff, and I'm just gonna say this, 'cause I served on that board, and I voted, we had another town council 2004 to clean up the, the tolling agreement 2003, but once again, we should've, you know, hindsight, we probably should've funded that ourselves, the three million dollars, and just went after Olin, because we gave away some rights when we took that money. Once again, I voted against that agreement, horrible agreement, I'm not saying we wouldn't be here today, that's here and there, but that's what it really comes down to, we gave away some rights, but we were able to gain back some rights back in 2004, of another agreement, of another town council. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to cycle back to the STB, Surface Transportation Bureau, they're the federal agency that will ultimately authorize or permit, or decide potentially to permit or not permit, the, the existence of New England Trans Rail at the site. So STB is the federal agency, yes? I wanna clarify, so I wanna make that sort of point, and it was Greg and I, that evening on the 25th, were sort of kicking around, what can we do as tiny town Wilmington to get the attention of the folks that are ultimately making these decisions? And, and what's frustrating is, it's happening in our backyard, but I don't feel like, because it is a federal project, that the federal agencies, I gotta be careful how I say this, are giving the appropriate level of attention to, or even really give a darn whether or not we like it or not. They, the federal agency, STB in this case, trumps the state agencies, so DEP doesn't have a say on this, EPA has done what they can to, to slow the process down, I suppose, but their, their hands are tied by, to some degree, by the nature of the site over there. The site needs to be cleaned up, and we all agree on that, including EPA, and that's a protracted, fairly long period of time in order to get the site cleaned up, before it can be used for some productive purpose. STB, as a federal agency, will potentially authorize the use of this site for, and for those that weren't at that, that event, I'm not gonna rehash it all, but the nature of the, the kind of business that will take place on that site, if this is permitted, is, is not at all consistent with what oughta be going on over there while that site is being cleaned up, of some really nasty chemicals, which resulted in the closing of five wells. So, when Greg and I spoke about it, I'm a little frustrated, not, not in a negative way, but I was frustrated that on the 25th, he and I, we talked a little bit about what can we do, can we get a letter to Congressman Moulton, and to Senators Warren and Markey, from perhaps your office, Judy, and with our signatures on it, maybe something a little bit more meaty than a letter from the town manager's office, but I, I don't know how to do that, but how can we elevate it beyond a tradi-, a traditional, typical communication from the Board of Selectmen's office? Is it phone calls? Do we ask Congressman Moulton to, you know, the next time he has office hours in our community, can we go en masse? And, and I know, what I was gonna say a moment ago, that I was frustrated, was, those weeks went by, I wanted to bring this up, but I couldn't, because of, I didn't wanna violate open meeting laws, so we've lost, what, three weeks or so, between then and now, to get this kinda communication going, but here we are, we're in open session, so let's have this conversation. I wanna do something, and I, I wanna do it loudly, and so that we're heard by these folks, Congressman Moulton, Senator Warren, Senator Markey, so that they can be our advocates, and speak to whoever is the, the overseer of the Surface Transportation Bureau, to say to that bureau, listen, this is a community that's had a blight in their community, that doesn't need another one, and so, you know, back off. They have to have that kinda clout, I believe that our elected officials at the federal level have that level of clout, we need to get them to working on our behalf, inasmuch as Representative Misselli did stand up and speak, and, and Senator Tar has been in our camp, but they're state officials, they're state electeds, and I'm afraid that the state electeds aren't getting heard to the level that our federal electeds would, so, thank you, Greg, for bringing it up, and, you know, you can hear in my voice that I'm passionate about this, I think we need to take this action.
Madam Chair, just real quick, back then in 2003, we did get the federal delegation, Senator Ted Kennedy, can't get any more stronger than that, and Senator Kerry, who was, you know, the Secretary of State- know, the Secretary of State, obviously, so we did do that back then and obviously more the better. But during that whole time, we always got the federal delegation involved and we are dealing with a federal agency. So, we had the liberal lion out there working on Ted Kennedy on that and, uh, to no avail at the moment.
Just, uh, one more thing, I'd, I'd, thank you Mike for your comments, uh, anything we can do, a letter, Judy, you mentioned, fifty letters, a hundred letters, and if they don't want to listen to the letter from the five of us, perhaps we attach a petition from the residents, because I don't think we'd have a hard time getting people to sign it. I mean, anything to try to speak their language when you start, you know, not just the five of us, but the members of their community and, and I know there's a lot of them that are upset about this and scared of this, to be quite honest.
You know, respectfully stated, I mean, I, you know, I, I did make the comments about the letter, but I, I think that the comments that Slakman shampoo has made, you know, whether it's phone calls or requesting a meeting and if we have to formally, you know, make it an agenda item, because, uh, I agree with you, you know, we need to, you know, in our businesses, we just, we, we make meetings, we make appointments all the time and that's how we get our business done. This should be no different and I don't really want to rely exclusively on a letter that goes into a mailbox and assume that it's going to pass the right hands and it's going to be circulated, uh, to come to the outcome that we're looking for. And I think we have to, you know, take, um, all the swings we can and, um, you know, in any way that we can to try and get the message out there. So I, I would ask Jeff that we, we talk about this further and what makes sense. Um, you know, we've had, um, uh, Moulton, we've had others that have been actually in the town hall, so maybe we leverage, you know, a futuristic date for another purpose and we leverage this and, and have this and whatever it, whatever needs to be done in terms of transparency and open meeting law and things of that nature, we can work through the logistics. But I think the point's well made that, um, a letter in this instance, uh, just simply stated, isn't going to cut it, I don't think, at this point.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, if I could add just one last thing, uh, maybe it'd be appropriate, if, um, Mr. Hall, if you could let us know when the next time someone from, uh, Seth Moulton's office is going to be in Wilmington, perhaps that's an important date that we should all know about, so we could let our congressman know.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is, I attended that meeting as well and it was such an eye-opener. Um, it is terrible what's going on and for the Service Transportation Board to vote in favor of it, um, they're just not listening to the residents. I, I can't imagine that they would entertain a, a positive vote for that. Maybe they were doing this meeting so that they could simply kill it and end it and, and that be it. Um, let's hope that, that, that's what they were doing. Uh, but I would agree with, uh, my colleagues, uh, Bendel and Shampoo and, um, get, I think we should do a letter regardless of, I, I, you know, whether you think it's strong enough or not. I think from, from the town board, I think there should be a letter. Um, yeah, and also, you know, asking our congressional leaders and, and state leaders to do the same, but, uh, I think collectively, um, there should be a letter coming from us and, and a petition is a great idea. So I would be, I would be, um...
I say we do it all.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, should we take a-
Every one of them is a good idea.
Should we take a motion and, and make it unanimous that we, uh, have a letter drafted from the Board of Selectmen? I'll make a motion. We do that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
If it's okay with these folks. I'm going to, uh, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know, I don't know how to do a petition. So, uh, it's going to look at perhaps doing something online, I don't know, it, so, I don't know. I, I love the idea of petition, but I want to make sure we do it, you know, right and I want to, I want to engender as much support for it and, and sponsorship of it as possible. So, um, between now and our next meeting, we'll, we'll, I'll kick it around a little bit and we'll maybe come back with some, some thoughts about how we do it.
I would suggest that you, you know, talk with Jeff and, uh, make sure that you, that we consult with town council before any sort of petition, you know, comes from any member of this board. That's just a courtesy suggestion to you.
I think it's a good idea.
Um, it can't hurt to get a legal, uh, legal, uh, ruling on that for you.
Appreciate that.
If you're going to be the originator of that, so...
Yeah, well, I'll take that on and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it again if we could in a couple of weeks.
So I do see that a gentleman would like to speak and I know it's not a public hearing, but, um, out of respect for your desire to speak and I know you've been waiting here for a while, if I could just kindly ask you to go to the microphone, that would be great. And if you could state your name and address, we're kind of going out of, uh, normal form here, but I want to give this gentleman an opportunity to speak. If you can state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Gennaro Grasso, I'm in 85 Main Street, Wilmington. I'm only going to be a minute and, and I know you're late, I don't want to take you too much. Um, I appreciate all your concern and, uh, for this problem that we have, because I live almost right across the street from there. Um, I'm not here to be pointing fingers, you know, because it's too late now to point fingers. Maybe we should have done something a long time ago? Maybe we totally go away, but this big monster is back again, it's bigger than before. If we all stick together, you, the other people the other side of town, then I gotta say this, I was a little disappointed, no, a little, but Lord, at the last meeting that we had, we only showed up a few people from the neighborhood and no one from the other side of town. When this thing comes this town, it's not just affect us, I'm almost over the hill, the next step will be done, you know what I mean? But I'm worried about the young one right next to me, the baby was born a few weeks ago. What's even happened to those young kids? You know what I mean? This thing, i- it's, it's a bad news. But the only thing I can ask you, I appreciate it, I'll thank you, let's just stick together, all of us, and see if we, a miracle can happen, maybe we can be, but don't, I don't know. Thank you again.
I appreciate you being here, Mr. Grasso. You're not over the hill, you're timeless. I remember you as a kid, so...
You remember my son.
Yes, I do, yes.
You guys go together.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Grasso.
Anyone else? If you can just go to the mic as well and state your name and address, please.
For the board, Cheryl Maxwell, 753A, Wilburn Street, less than a mile from Olin Chemical. I was quite taken back and ready to be agitated that more isn't done. Now, I've heard some things from the board, but to me, this has been going on for a little while. Why are we acting, why are you now aggressively trying to get in and do something? And petitions, I've done the petitions, why are you not calling our state representatives and getting a hold of them? Olin Chemical is considered to be the EPA of the, one of the worst sites, which we've all agreed on. Human exposure status insufficient data, contaminated groundwater status, not under control. I can't even water my flowers and this train station is going to come in and use our water that we sacrifice so much for to clean their garbage rail trains. I guess I want to say, why on earth are you going to allow this garbage toxic waste train to come into Wilmington? I feel that this area, which this gentleman has just spoken about, we deal with a lot at that end of the town. We deal with transportation issues, you name it. I'm thoroughly disgusted that as a citizen of Wilmington, this is still an open case. We have covered every measure at the town meeting, health issues, cancers, lymphomas, birth defects and miscarriages, environmental issues, water issues, transportation. Even if there was an accident that happened, chemical toxins in our town, which they're train, doing gases or whatever, our town fire department and medical people are excellent, but they also stated they cannot handle a catastrophic event should one occur. Do you not have the authority to protect our, our community and our environment? I wondered about that and I was uplifted to think that you are taking initiatives to do something about it. I also came upon the mission statement for the town of Wilmington and I won't go into it, but in order to make this community a good place to live, to work and to raise and educate a family, these services must be responsible to the needs of the people. I think we have to act aggressively to stop this, not just drag our feet and do whatever. I for one will do what I can. I have tolerated the Pepsi-Cola trucks at 4:30 when I get up, that's my alarm clock. The quarter to six FedEx trucks that come by, the traffic that I have to wait to go and get my mail. I'm not going to tolerate the chemicals, the pollution and the medical, the issues with health that's going to go on. And I've heard concerns from the board and I appreciate it, but until you live, and I'm not for sure you live down in our area, I am a homeowner. Uh, we have paid our home for years and now it's going to go poof, if this comes in. I would suggest in that case, the town would have to consider reevaluation, a reassessment of the taxes if that should occur. That's something you have to look down forward in, in the future. But I came just to voice my concerns and to see what is the Board of Selectmen doing in our town to stop this, to, to take it upon themselves? I have to admit, a few, a handful stood up at the town meeting and spoke and I was grateful for that, the last meeting. Let's get out there and do a little bit more, please, for the people down at the other end. There's a lot of kids down there that will suffer from this. I know, i- it's not good and I've heard that from the town and I respectfully thank you if you do do something to halt this, particularly the committees that are reevaluating it.
Thank you very much, you know, for your comments. I'm going to turn it over to the manager, but first I just want to say that, um, I could not probably succinctly describe to you the past however many year history that the town has been working on this. Um, we have a full law firm in Boston with a multitude of people that are working on this, as well as the past town manager and the current town manager, uh, previous boards of selectmen. Um, I would certainly invite you to look at the his- the history of our meeting minutes over the past five to 10 years, to see how many, uh, meetings that this has been a discussion topic and how many public forums have actually, uh, happened that, uh, the, the town manager as well as various personnel and boards of selectmen have, uh, taken the initiative to try and address this and work with some of the organizations within town. I can tell you that if this board had unilateral power to make the decision to stop it, it would have been stopped a long time ago. Um, I'm not going to try and give you some, uh, political rhetoric, that's not what this is about, but there are, uh, local, state and federal laws that we need to follow and we're, we're relying on the advice of our legal team to do that. Uh, we certainly are very, uh, passionate, we don't necessarily need to live on Woburn Street to be concerned, uh, not for, just for our children, but also for you and for your families. It, it affects all of us, certainly if our public drinking water supplies are affected, it affects all of us. And I know, um, you know, I can exchange pleasantries with you this evening, but it's not going to cure the situation. You're right, uh, we certainly need to work collectively as a team to continue to go at this particular project and try and stop it. Um, and just rest assured, although you don't necessarily see us in your, in your area and walking the streets and in people's driveways literally overseeing this, it doesn't mean that we're not working in our respective destinations to try and, uh, put a stop to this. This, this is a definite big issue, there's no question that this is a problem. Um, so I don't want to be disingenuous and tell you that, you know, we have the absolute 100% answer here tonight, uh, but we're definitely committed and as you've heard tonight, uh, doing what we can. We certainly have been doing things and I would invite you to, uh, certainly speak with the manager now and potentially offline for a full history of, of the myriad of different activities that the town has availed itself to, to try and work through this process. So, I can appreciate your frustration and your comments, I did, uh, hear your comments via tape, um, I wasn't there physically, but I did, uh, I know you were trying to collect your thoughts and you said that you would be further-
I worked all day.
You were further going to be submitting and you were-
Yes.
-disenchanted with the fact that you only had received notification Thursday prior and you were frustrated by that. So, um, I did hear what you said then and I hear what you're saying this evening, so I'd like to turn it over to Jeff now to address, address you as well.
Uh, so, ma- many of the comments that I would have offered, the chairman has, uh, put forward, but clearly, thi- this has been, uh, on the top of the priority list for a long time. The, and this, uh, New England Trans Rail back in the early 2000s was pursuing this effort and there was a tremendous effort at that time by my predecessor and others to stall it. And in fact, as, uh, Slakman McCoy mentioned, uh, part of the effort involved a contingent from Wilmington going to Washington DC. Uh, there were, uh, our congressional delegation was involved, uh, and at the time, the, uh, New England Trans Rail, part of their proposal included a solid waste, uh, transfer and it, and given the circumstances, Senator Lottenberg from, uh, New Jersey, uh, was very instrumental in, uh, putting forward legislation that would, uh, not allow that to go forward. So in, we, the town was able to halt the project at that point because of, uh, some legislation that was passed at the federal level. New England Trans Rail, for whatever reason, is very persistent and there was a stretch of time where they, uh, took no further action, they pulled their permit from, or their, uh, application from the New England, uh, from the, uh, Surface Transportation Board. And then more recently, within the last, uh, year or so, uh, they've brought it forward, they went to the, uh, Environmental Protection Agency, uh, to seek out a le- a comfort, so-called comfort letter, which basically was a letter stating that, uh, under certain circumstances, uh, EPA would not object to them going forward. That was a tremendous surprise and, and shock to the town because, you know, we've been partners, uh, to this point with EPA in trying to address this issue. Uh, we made it known at the time and continue to make it known that we weren't, uh, we, we vehemently disagreed with the EPA's assessment and, uh, uh, but, you know, they're a federal agency, they have certain constraints that they're working within. The, the unfortunate reality of this is that the Board of Selectmen, as the chairman indicated, does not have the authority to override a federal agency. This Surface Transportation Board, uh, part of their mission is to promote rail transportation. So, you know, unfortunately, in our case, uh, they're looking at this from a perspective of, uh, you know, is trans, rail transit of this nature, uh, needed in this region and how can we facilitate that? They, they are required though to consider that in a, uh, uh, within certain constraints and, you know, so our job at this point is to make the strongest case we can in, whether it's through these comment letters, through our legislative delegation, whatever means possible, uh, to make the case that this, uh, project does not belong here and we will continue to do that. I, I really would, uh, suggest to you that the Board of Selectmen have been vehemently opposed to this project since day one. Uh, I and, and the staff that work with me have continued to persistently pursue this and will, will do that to the extent we can going forward.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to offer you an independent transportation, uh, study that was done from a company in Boston and they said how trucks could not, for the cement plant, use that, uh, roadway with particular angles and pedestrians and that. I have a copy of that also if anyone should want that or need that.
And, uh, we, uh, I believe we have access, uh, we have that document ourselves, the-
From Fort Hill?
Uh, well, there, there was a firm that was hired, TEC-
Right.
-that, uh, performed some, uh, traffic evaluation. In fact, there, we've also brought them on board specifically for the purpose of looking, uh, at the traffic implications for this project. So again, between the traffic engineer, uh, the geotechnical engineer, I mean, we're, we're invested in trying to see that this doesn't happen.
I thank you and everyone that could help us. It's greatly appreciated. You certainly must understand our frustrations down in that neighborhood and mine.
Absolutely.
My, yes. The due to health problems since we've been here has not been good, so I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
At this point, I'll bring the comments relative to this topic to a close and move on to further communications.
Okay, uh, next, uh, under Communications is a, is correspondence from Minuteman Senior Services. Uh, this is an annual update that is provided to the town. This is an annual update that is provided to the town. They are a service provider to the elderly services department, and they note specifically that for the fiscal year 2016, they provided service to 1,775 residents in Wilmington at a total value of $1,374,826. They provide a number of different types of services, including information and referrals, case management and home care, and caregiver support, to name a few. So, they're a vital part of the safety net, so to speak, in terms of working with our elders. Oh, okay. Jumping back a minute, just to note to the board that we have a public hearing that will be coming up on November 28th. This is also an annual hearing, and just, the notice has already been posted, a public hearing to provide an open forum for discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification for fiscal 2017. Taxation purposes will be held at the town hall on Monday, November 28th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Interested taxpayers may present their views on classification policy at the hearing or in writing to the town manager's office until 4:30 PM on that date. So, Karen Rassus, the principal assessor, will be coming before the board to present the potential tax rates and to offer alternatives on the tax classification process.
Okay, thank you.
Next is a memo from me to the board. This is with regard to the appointment of the Assistant Town Manager and Human Resources Director. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Denise Casey to the position of Assistant Town Manager, HR Director. Denise Casey is currently the HR Director for the Town of Lexington. She has been in that position since 2007. She, prior to that, worked for the Town of Concord and Town of Bedford. She's a graduate of Suffolk University, obtained both her undergraduate degree and her graduate degree in public administration from Suffolk, and has now, for a number of years, taught there as an adjunct professor in the local government field. So, she's, in my estimation, highly qualified, has received a number of, a number of awards over the years, including the Emile Scott Award from the Massachusetts Municipal Personnel Association. It's my belief that she has the experience and the personality to really be able to assist me and the town. So, she'll be starting December 5th. Next is a correspondence to Jane Lyman, the Senior Manager of Government and Community Relations with Comcast. As the board knows, we are in the very beginning stages of our ascertainment process with Comcast. They have a 10-year cable license which expires in March of 2018. Part of that ascertainment process is to provide them with information about issues or concerns that we have. This comes by way of WCTV and expresses the desire for Comcast to invest essentially in upgrading some of the infrastructure that supports our public access channels, and it goes into detail about specifically what is believed is needed, and again, will be further discussed as we go through the ascertainment process for license renewal with Comcast.
Board to Consider items.
First item on the Board to Consider is a memo from Valerie Gingrich with regard to property at, on Fifth Street. You'll recall that at the town meeting in this past town meeting, 2016, there was a parcel of property, map 36, parcel 95, that was deemed surplus to the town's needs. The principal assessor assessed the minimum bid price on that property as being $4,500. Town meeting authorized the sale of that property. We went through a invitation for bid process, received one bid for $4,500 from Suzanne and Kenneth Clarkin, who happened to be a butters to the property. It's approximately 1,300 square feet, and so I would ask that the board authorize the conveyance, the release of this deed for this property.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion, so it's directed by the town manager relative to the property of in question.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So, the next Board to Consider item?
The next Board to Consider is a request from Barbara J. Cola. I'll just read it into the record. To the members of the Board of Selectmen, my name is Barbara J. Cola, and I reside in Wilmington, Massachusetts, and have for 18-plus years. My family and I have moved into Eight Kenwood Ave. on 1124 1997. I am seeking your approval slash appointment to become a constable in Wilmington. I have attached five letters from Wilmington residents that speak to my moral character and residency in the town, of which one is an attorney in Wilmington as required. My hope is to be able to use the appointment to serve the Commonwealth, and I plan to attend all required training. And she provides her contact information.
Thank you.
I do have a recommendation from the police chief, and he indicates, our review of Barbara J. Cola of Eight Kenwood Avenue, Wilmington, Mass., has determined that there is no evidence to prevent her from serving in the appointed position of constable in the town of Wilmington. The Wilmington Police Department recommends favorable approval. If you need any further information, feel free to contact me.
So, just as a question, and I've asked this before, but just for the public record, there's no limit in terms of the amount of constables we can have, is that correct?
That's right. Currently, there are four constables who reside in Wilmington. I believe that one of them may not be active at this point, and then there are seven constables that reside out of town and serve.
Now, to the point that was made here in terms of servicing the Commonwealth and planning on attending all required trainings, do we have any obligation to be checking as a town as to, you know, we have to do certain training and ethics and things like that? I mean, are they held to any set of standards that we should be following or tracking?
They're, so they're not employees of the town, so from that perspective, we don't have any oversight for them. Essentially, they are required to obtain the training, and we have not historically taken any steps to confirm that training. I think, as a matter of practice, they, in the absence of that, would be operating outside of the law.
Okay. Right. Any other questions, comments, or a motion regarding this request?
I'm gonna ask, Jeff, I don't know if you're able to do this in 15 words or less. Can you summarize what the, what the overall duties are of these constables? I'm familiar with it from a 30,000-foot view, but I've never had any interaction with one.
So, they provide service, you know, if there is, when we get served, for example, whether there's, where there's a legal complaint, a summons, that will come via a constable. So, any number of individuals in Wilmington or other places that get served with legal, for legal proceedings, a constable will perform that function. We also have constables that post the warrant. I mean, that's a more local issue.
Okay, thank you.
So, questions, comments, or a motion for that?
Well, I'll make a motion to, to-
Point.
Point.
Point, appoint Barbara Kelly as a, as a constable.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, okay? Thank you. And we took the action for the last Board to Consider while Valerie was here, which was for the purchase and sale of the Butters Farm property located at 165 Chestnut Street. So, we've taken that action, and I'll move on to public comments. Hearing seeing none. Moving on to new business. Anyone? Yes?
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you. Anything?
Yeah.
Okay, anything down here?
Go Wildcats.
Great, go Cats.
Thank you. And I don't have anything.
And the Rams.
So, I think it would be appropriate, I think, to say that there, speaking of the Rams, is that we were invited to the Thanksgiving football game for the dedication of the football stadium to Charlie Lyons. So, that's certainly worthy recognition for a fine gentleman who served Shawshank Tech for many years, is a retired superintendent now. So, all of us did receive an invitation, and it did have an RSVP on it, and I did receive at least one message from one board member. So, if you haven't had a chance to respond to that, that would be certainly most appreciated so they can plan accordingly. And with that, happy Thanksgiving as well, and important dates, please.
Important dates, through November 26th, we have curbside collection of yard waste. November 16th is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 17th is the next Facilities Master Plan Committee meeting. It's held here at the town hall, room 9, 6:00 PM. November 19th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On November 19th, Shawshank Tech Craft Fair, 100 Cook Street, Billerica, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. November 23rd, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 24th, Thanksgiving, town offices closed. On November 25th, town offices are closed. November 26th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 28th is the Board of Selectmen's next meeting, room 9, 7:00 PM. November 28th is also, as previously noted, a discussion regarding local property tax policy in reference to classification for fiscal 2017. Board of Selectmen meeting, town hall, room 9, 7:00 PM. November 29th, welcome to Wilmington reception, Memorial Library, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And I would just ask, before board members leave this evening, if you could sign the document for the purchase and sale, there's four copies that need to be signed.
Okay, thank you. This time I'm going to obtain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, all those.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and good night.